All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's seven o'clock on Monday, July 6, 2020. We have with us tonight Pastor Christian Sazilo, Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God, 4100 King Springs Road. Invite you up at this time. Everybody, please stand for our invocation and the pledge.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening to you all. If you'd be willing to join me in prayer. Lord God, I want to begin tonight by giving thanks for our community. Lord, all may not be right in the world right now, but in our very small part of it, we have leaders and people, Lord, who serve with decency, integrity, and with compassion. Lord, they've served well in this crisis, and I thank you for such good leadership in this great community. Lord, when we're willing to serve one another and love one another, and even put others' needs as greater than ours, Lord, just as you taught us, Lord, we're able to build lives and communities where we're strong, where we're at peace, where there's justice and equality. Lord, even as we recognize the brokenness, violence, and even those who are sick around us, Lord, I can join my voice with the Psalmist who declares in Psalm 90. He says, "Lord, you have been our dwelling place for all generations. Before the mountains were brought forth, or ever you had formed the earth and the world, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God." So tonight, Lord, I find my strength in you, and I give you thanks for your great faithfulness. As a Christian, I pray in the name of the One who I have come to call my Lord, my Savior, and my God, the name of Jesus, and I pray these things in your name. Amen and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being with us this evening. Item number two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. I don't have a report. I'll just have a couple of comments. Number one is about fireworks in the city. I've gotten flooded with emails and phone calls from frustrated residents, as I know many on the council have as well. I'll just tell you, as a city, we have done everything that we can at a local level to tighten up our ordinances and even, I know we're going to revisit our noise ordinance, to put as many restrictions as we can locally on fireworks. And I'm all for celebrating our independence and having a good time and fireworks legally, but I think in a dense area like ours, folks that go beyond the hours or abuse that in any way, you know, I got two toddlers and two dogs. I know a lot of people, a lot of veterans live in our community. We're all packed in here together, and I just want to make clear that we're doing everything we can locally, but we're beholden right now to the state law that governs when those things can be let off. So that's number one. Number two, I've been approached by several citizens asking me why the city of Smyrna has not mandated that people wear masks in our city, and my answer is, that is not something that we can do as a city government. We cannot do anything more or less restrictive than the governor's orders during this health pandemic and the health declared state of emergency. So we can do that in our city facilities, and we have done that. All of our employees and anybody who visits a city facility will be temperature-checked and have masks, but as far as in the city, that's not something within our purview. So just wanted to cover those two areas. Now, we'll go on to the next issue, land issues, zonings, annexations, item number four. The first item, ordinance 2020-03, approval of ordinance 2020-03 annexation request with 100% owners requesting annexation. All tract of land lying and being in landlot 695, Seventeenth District, Second Section of Cobb County, Georgia, total of .09 acres, being known as 1990 Cooper Lake Drive Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia 30080. Effective date is August 1, 2020, and part of Ward 6. Ms. Sadler Jones, any background?
The applicants are seeking approval for an annexation of approximately 0.09 acres. Certified letters were sent to Cobb County's Clerk Office and the Cobb County Community Development Planning Division. The letter of non-objection was received from Cobb County. The annexation will become effective August 1, 2020, and will be within Ward 6. Staff recommends approval of this annexation.
This would be in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So this is a small, small tract on a neighbor not so far from my home, their backyard, where they're going to expand their very lovely property. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve item 4A, ORD 2020-03, as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 4B, ordinance 2020-05, approval of ordinance 2020-05 annexation request with 100% of owners requesting annexation. All tract of land lying and being in landlots 241 and 264 of the Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, total of 1.3 acres, being known as 171 Concord Road Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia 30082. Effective date is August 1, 2020, and will be part of Ward 4. Ms. Sadler Jones, any background, please?
The applicant is seeking approval of annexation of approximately 1.3 acres. Certified letters were sent to the Cobb County Clerk's Office and the Cobb County Community Development Planning Division. The letter of non-objection from Cobb County was received. The annexation will become effective August 1, 2020, and will be within Ward 4. Staff recommends approval of the annexation.
Thank you. This would be in Mr. Welch's district. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-05 ordinance, or approval of the ordinance for annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation. All tract of land lying and being in landlot 241, 264 of the Seventeenth District, Second Section of Cobb County, total of 1.3 acres, being known as 171 Concord Road Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia 30082. Effective date, August 1, 2020, part of Ward 4.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 4C, 2020-234. This is a public hearing, plat approval with variances, V20-030, 1.72 acres, landlot 487, 1151 Stevens Street, Longo Homes Incorporated. Ms. Sadler Jones, a background.
The applicant is requesting approval to reconfigure three existing lots into three residential lots. The lots are occupied by a single-family home that will be demolished. The applicant wishes to reconfigure the three lots with all three frontage on Stevens Street to build a single-family home on each lot. The applicant has submitted a proposed site plan for development of reference, for your reference, pardon me. Community Development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replating of 1151 Stevens Street with conditions.
This is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience who has, who wants to say anything or thinks you want to say anything about this, please come up and be sworn in at this time. Scott Cochran, our city attorney. Okay, we'll save public, we'll save public comment until after we've, we've gone through with the applicant, and I'll call you back up, okay? Oh, is he the applicant? Oh, you are the applicant. My fault. Good. Well, then proceed. Come on up.
It's okay if I take this off like the other meeting.
Yes.
Thank you so much for having me. First, I'd like to take a moment and thank, thank from the bottom of my heart, and I feel I speak for the citizens, Mayor Derek Norton and all the fine council persons. We are thankful for your strong leadership and direction through these challenging months. So thank you so very much. And I would also like to thank all of Smyrna's first responders for their willingness to put our safety and protection first and continuing to, continuing to prove day after day that they are by far the finest team of first responders in the country. I'd like to extend a thank you to Ward Councilman 3, Travis Lindley. He took the time, he took the time in the middle of this pandemic to meet me on site, to review and ask the important questions that represented the thoughts and concerns of his fellow Ward 3 homeowners. He is truly a person of the people. We worked through the details in a safe manner, and the result was encouraging. So thank you for your time. Thank you to Chairman Joel Powell and his Planning and Zoning Board for hosting a very successful public meeting last week. The level of professionalism and coordination was most certainly a template of success for future meetings, and I was glad to be part of that. And finally, I wanted to personally thank Rusty, Caitlin, Joey, and Kevin Moore for working so close with me in this process and being so quick to help. They provided great feedback and solutions that worked, which made this, this process very smooth during a tough time. Any successful project in Smyrna starts with this team, and they are very, they're very well-balanced and better than any municipality that I've worked with, and I've worked with several. Mayor Norton and council, I'm here today seeking plat approval with variances for case 2020-234, consisting of three existing lots currently known as two parcel numbers and one with a, with a home located on it, the number 1151 Stevens Street. The goal in, of this case is to better align the three lots with Stevens Street, as you heard before. The zoning will not change. It will remain R15 in keeping with the other homes on the street. The simple plant reconfiguration with approval consists of three variances needed to achieve this. The first one is reduction in the middle, minimum front lot width at the front setback line from 85 to 63. This is needed in order to better align the lots with Stevens Street, bringing the one that's landlocked in the back to the front and to match it up with the other homes on the street. This will also solve that hardship facing that rear landlocked lot, which makes, which now makes it a viable, viable as a home for a wonderful future Stevens Street resident. This variance garnered staff support and was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. The second one was reduction in the minimum front setback from 35 to 25 feet, which solves a few problems. Most importantly, providing the additional needed space to have clearance from the stream buffer hardship and align the new homes to be in alignment with the other homes on Stevens Street again. This variance also had staff support and was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. And then the last one was a reduction in the minimum driveway setback from five foot to two foot from property line to better serve the lots with garages that are plaza entry, meaning the garage's not on the front, it kind of hooks in, which me personally, being a builder, feel that's a nicer look. And this will allow for an easier transition and turnaround from the driveway to Stevens Street, which will benefit the homeowner and the neighbors during higher traffic times. This variance also had staff support and was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. I have complied, I have complied with all the requirements of the application process, including sending certified packages out to all the surrounding neighbors with information as specified in the application. I'm happy to report that we only had one call, and it was from a neighbor behind that was just a little concerned if what would be in his backyard. I took the time, met with him on the telephone, discussed what was going on there, and after the call, he felt really comfortable with what we were doing and said he didn't have any other troubles and wished me the best of luck. Let's see, after, overall, this has been a great experience in Ward 3. I've been, I've been welcomed by the neighbors and humbled that some are excited to see us remake the property. Being a longtime home builder, renovator, and resident of Smyrna, I am proud to be here this evening, and I'm more excited to be able to show you all the passion I have for Smyrna as I demonstrate that through the look and quality of my homes. They are, these three custom homes will not disappoint. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Before, before we do that, I kind of did this out of order. I'd like to invite our staff, Rusty or Joey, up to, to give any other comments that they have before we open it up for questions. Thank you, Landon, for sanitizing.
I'm really going to try to run through this quickly since Tammy and Vince have both summed this up pretty well.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
No problem. Basically, I'm going to try to get to the, to the conditions we placed on it. This is the subject property. You see the zoning map. It's R15. This is approval of a subdivision, of a subdivision. So you were just reconfiguring the properties from three lots with one landlocked lot to three lots facing Stevens Street. And this is basically the orientation. As you go through, they're looking for a front setback of 25 feet, a side setback of 10, and a rear of 30. These are the driveway concepts. And then he's even delineated where his proposed detention facilities to deal with stormwater. There is a stream buffer that essentially bisects the property. So the front setback variance is to give relief off that buffer and pull the houses closer to the street. And as, as he stated in his presentation, they are looking for a front setback reduction from 35 feet to 25 feet, a driveway setback reduction from five feet to two, and then a minimum lot width reduction from 85 feet to 63 feet. These lot, these lot widths are consistent with adjoining lots to the west. These are some of the proposed home elevations, what he's proposing to build. Subject property, there, there's an existing house back there behind those trees. It's really tough to see. It's been a code enforcement issue for quite some time. So I think the neighborhood is going to be happy with the, with the proposed changes. Here's some of the adjacent homes. Community Development recommends approval of the requested variances with the setback stated before. Number two, with the minimum lot width at 63 feet. Number three, he's got to provide adequate stormwater detention. It's approved by the city engineer. Number four, dedicate some right-of-way along, five feet of right-of-way along Stevens Street. And number five, develop the, the plan accord, develop the site according to the site plan. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Rusty?
So Rusty, the three homes, are they, they all have the 10-foot setback, or is it the two on the outside have, the side setback, I mean?
No, they all have 10 feet.
And that's what the ordinance?
That's what R15 requires, and he's not requesting a variance from that.
Oh, okay.
The only setback variance he's requesting is reduce the front from 35 feet to 25 feet.
Okay. Thank you. And the lot, and the lot width?
And the lot width, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I know there's the public hearing, and we got a little bit out of order. Is there anybody else in the audience who wanted to make any comment? Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor, just a, what's the target price ra, price range for your homes?
I think I can yell it out. We're shooting for somewhere between 750 and 800.
Shooting for between 750 and 800.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, this is in Mr. Lindley's ward. Turn it over to you, Mr. Lindley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thanks, Mr. Longo. Met with him, it was in the haze of the early days of COVID, so it's been a while, but appreciate his efforts in working with city staff to hammer out some agreements, and I think this will be hands-down improvement on Stevens Street. And for the record, I've not heard from anybody to the contrary. So power that sometimes when you reach out, people do listen. With that, I would make motion to pass as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item five is privileged licenses. We have two. Item 5A, license 2020-11, privileged license request, license 2020-11, beer retail package, 1649 Roswell Street Southeast, Nadia LLC doing business as Five Points Food Store with Gutam Debneath as agent. Ms. Sadler Jones, a background, please.
Mr. Debneath, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing that, will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at 1694 Roswell Street Southeast. The applicant has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. He agrees to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. A background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, and it failed to review, reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Staff recommends approval of privileged license for the sale of beer retail package for Nadia LLC DBA Five Points Food Store with Gotum Debneath as the registered agent.
Is the applicant here? Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Sard, S-A-R-D. I'm the attorney for Nadia LLC. This is Mr., this is Gutam Debneath who's here as well. Excited for the store to open. Mr. Debneath has been running the store for the last three years. His customers have been asking for alcohol. He hasn't been able to get it because the Hawthorne School was located close by. The Hawthorne School has since moved, the former school campus is now an administrative building. So with that opportunity, he's applied for the license.
This is in Mr. Lindley's ward. Mr. Lindley, have any questions?
No, sir. At the appropriate time, motion to pass as presented.
Any other discussion or questions from the council? Before, no? Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you, sir.
Item 5B, license 2020-12, privileged license request, license 2020-12, beer, wine, and liquor retail package, 2900 South Cobb Drive Southeast, Suite B, First Choice Beer, Wine, and Spirits LLC with Catherine Amador as agent. Ms. Sadler Jones, a background, please.
Catherine Amador will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at 2900 South Cobb Drive Southeast, Suite B. She has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. Ms. Amador has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. A background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, and it failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Staff recommends approval of the privileged license for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor retail package for First Choice Beer and Wine, Beer, Wine, and Spirits LLC with Catherine Amador as the registered agent.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on up, please. This is in Ms. Wilkinson's ward, so any questions or discussion?
Thank, thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine, and we had some business about restaurants here in Smyrna. So I want to know if you can, I had the privilege to open a liquor store in here in Smyrna because we like the economy and the rules and everything.
Very good. Ms. Wilkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, nice to meet you. Your business will be located in Ward 5, and I look forward to seeing your business there. Do you know, you've taken the courses through the City of Smyrna, and the, the police department does periodically check to make sure that, you know, you're checking the IDs there, and you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell us more about your business and maybe the hours that you're going to be operating?
We don't decide the hours yet because we're working on it on the license. But yes, I received the course, and I know I have to check the ID and everything. Like I say, we had a restaurant close to there, like two miles. We open 11 to 12 or 11 a.m. and yes, everybody has to have the business, the license for sale of liquor and...
Okay. All right. Thank you. We look forward to having your business in Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to make a motion for approval of item 5B, the privileged license request for LIC 2020-12, beer, wine, and liquor retail package at 2900 South Cobb Drive, Suite B, First Choice Beer, Wine, and Spirits LLC with Catherine Amador as agent.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Thanks for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're at formal business. Item 6A, 2020-206, approval to award proposal to provide construction materials testing services for the Windy Hill Boulevard project to the lowest and responsive company Geo Hydro Engineers located at 1,000 Cobb Place Boulevard, Suite 290, Kennesaw, Georgia 30144, in the amount of $349,320, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents and finance to make the necessary budget amendment to finalize. documents and finance to make the necessary budget amendment to finalize. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Croy Engineering requested proposals on behalf of the City of Smyrna for construction material testing services for Wendy Hill Boulevard project. Croy Engineering is the SPOSS project manager for this particular project. Four proposals were received. Geo Hydro Engineers Incorporated was the low bidder in the amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, and it is staff's recommendation, including the purchasing manager and Croy Engineering, that Geo Hydro Engineers LLC be awarded the bid for this particular work.
Thank you. This is in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, it's a, it's a big budget item, but it's very important for the success of the project where you have to have all our materials tested and have somebody, have a qualified firm keeping an eye on, on that aspect of the, of the project. Good news is this came in under budget, and it's for the entire scope of, scope of the project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the motion as provided. Item six A, twenty-twenty dash two oh six, as previously read.
Have a motion, is there any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, all those opposed? All right, it's approved six-one with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item six B, twenty-twenty dash two-two-five, approval to enter in a professional services agreement with the City of Smyrna Government Affairs Consultant, Mr. Cash Trevetti, and to have the Mexic, mayor execute all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Mayor and council propose the professional engagement of a government affairs consultant to represent the City of Smyrna before the Georgia Legislature and the executive branch. As our city manages the city budgets and projects over the next fiscal year, the need for possible state funds and assistance is anticipated. The services of the government affairs consultant would begin on August first, twenty-twenty, and continue for twelve months, and would be strictly before the Georgia General Assembly, Administration, and State Departments. Staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Tim Gould is going to handle this agenda item. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something I, I think I'm really enthused about. I think it's an important step for our city to increase our voice and influence down at the state capitol during the legislative process and with the governor's office. At other cities and counties, Cobb County has a presence at the Georgia Legislature during the session. Marietta, Dunwoody, Brookhaven, and countless other cities, so just really it's time for the City of Smyrna to, to do the same. Cash Trevetti is a Smyrna resident, he's a co-founder of his business. He's got a wealth of experience, particularly around appropriations process, both in the legislature, the governor's office, and also with a number of different departments throughout the, throughout, at the state level. So he's, he'll be an asset for us, and excited to, to see us make this, make this move forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item six B, twenty-twenty dash two-two-five as previously read.
Have a motion, is there any discussion? Ms. Wilkinson? Oh, okay. All right, we have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Austin Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero, thank you. Item six C, twenty-twenty dash two-four-zero, approval of extended work hours for Carol Daniel Construction for extended work hours Monday through Sunday from six a.m. to ten p.m. July seventh, twenty-twenty to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Carol Daniel Construction has requested a work hour extension from six a.m. to ten p.m. on Monday through Sunday from July seventh, twenty-twenty to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one for the completion of the Campbell High School's school buildings and site work. Community Development has reviewed the request for extended work hours and does not recommend extension because the general contractor has not provided a specific rationale for the work hour extension. Additionally, work hour extensions are generally approved for a limited time, one-to-two month timeframe. Community Development does not support large construction vehicles and equipment that would disturb surrounding residents over such an extended period of time. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the work hour extension.
This is in Mr. Lindley's ward. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Tammy, for the, the background. I, I share, I'm proud as a Campbell alumni, proud to have Campbell High School in my, my ward, and excited about the, the endeavor underway with expansive construction project. However, I share concerns about the folks that live around the school. There was already some issues leading up to groundbreaking, I guess, about two months ago with transparency as to what was going on. So with that, I would respectfully ask that the, the construction company come back with a more reasonable timeline. It, it is my understanding this is a multi-year project, and this only takes us through the end of the year. So with that, a motion to deny.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. To deny that id, agenda item. Seven, item seven, commercial building permits. Seven A, twenty-twenty dash two-two-eight, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of a new two-hundred-and-seventy-unit apartment building called The Drift at Riverview Landing, sixty-twenty-five Riverview Road, Prestwick Construction Company, M.R. LLC. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
A commercial building permit has been issued at sixty-twenty-five Riverview Road for construction of a new three-hundred-fifty-thousand, seven-hundred-sixty-seven-square-foot, two-hundred-seventy-unit apartment building for The Drift at Riverview Landing. The total estimated cost of the project is thirty-eight million, four-hundred-thousand dollars, and Prestwick Construction Company LLC is listed as the general contractor for the project.
This is in Mr. Wheaton's ward. Do we need staff to come up and make any, make any presentation?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, Mr. Wheaton?
Yeah, thank you so much, Tammy, for reading that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is basically, you know, this, the next phase of development going on down there or off of Riverview Drive. The first one, there's the Eddie there, Riverview Landing, which is doing quite well, and this allows them to go into the phase two, to break ground on that next phase of the development. So at, at the proper time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven A, twenty-twenty two-two-eight, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of the two-hundred-and-seventy-unit apartment building called The Drift at Riverview Landing, sixty-twenty-five Riverview Road, Prestwick Construction Company LLC.
Have a motion, is there any discussion? All right, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero, thank you. Item eight is a consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, can you read the consent agenda, please, for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as approval. Item A, approval of the June eleventh, twenty-twenty committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, approve the purchase of a Parks and Recreation twenty-twenty Ford F-150 Supercab four-by-two, pardon me, V-six stock unit from Wade Ford, pricing based on City of Atlanta contract one zero five nine zero dash WS, WS for twenty-four thousand, eight hundred one dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents and finance to make the necessary budget amendment to finalize. And item E, approval of an extension of normal work hours for R.D.J.E. Incorporated during the water sewer modifications on Wendy Hill Boulevard project from seven p.m. to six a.m. for eleven days. The contractor is requesting dates from July to August, starting July thirteenth through July fourteenth, July twentieth through July twenty-first, July twenty-seventh through July twenty-eighth, August third through August fourth, and August tenth through August thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Wagner, do I have a second? Mr. Gould, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero, thank you. Item nine is ward of committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a couple mentions of some things that some residents have expressed concern about and make sure that everyone's on the same page. There's been a lot of issues with traffic and things like that in the city, and I've gotten several phone calls from residents in Ward seven, particularly related to speed on the East West Connector. Just want to remind people, while you're out and about, let's be mindful of, of the roads and the traffic and, and mindful of, of our speed limits while we're driving around the roads, maybe less dense, but we still have to make sure we're safe for, for all the residents for sure. As well, has been announced, we had a, has been put out publicly now, we've had a really good discussion about the potential of a nondiscrimination ordinance for the City of Smyrna, and excited for a potential town hall meeting coming up on Tuesday, July fourteenth at seven o'clock to address any public comment from that. So we're a tremendous opportunity to get public feedback on that draft and to see about it moving forward. And with that, I yield, thank you so much.
Mr. Tim Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to touch on something that we're all well aware of, that the number of incidences and cases of COVID-nineteenth obviously is increasing. So with this, with school about to start near the near future, it's quite possible that some, some of our young people will need to get tested, and my daughter's going to get tested tomorrow, and it was a little bit of an adventure to try to find a place to, to accommodate underage youth. So just the Department of Public Health over at Jim Miller Park is doing, doing free testing. It's an easy process, so if you, if you or one of your kids need to get tested, get onto the Department of Health site, they'll walk you through the process, and it's a pretty fast and uncomfortable test, but it's need to get, but it's important to have done. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak about a number of calls that I've received from mainly Smyrna Grove residents about the number of accidents that were occurring on Wendy Hill Road, and I have communicated that with the staff, and they've been looking into it, and one of the, the remedies that they came up with was reducing the speed limit as you're coming into the city back, coming over that hill at Benson Pool Road, and so hopefully we'll see some reduction in those accidents that were occurring there. Part of it's due to the construction of the Wendy Hill Road Boulevard. And thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Corky Welch? Travis Lindley?
Yes, sir. Just to announce, the, the city will be working through our Smyrna supports endeavor. We'll be holding a grocery assist program in Rose Gardens on Thursday, July ninth. However, for the benefit of the room and anybody listening at home, you must have a reservation. You need to call Penny at City Hall. The number is six-seven-eight-six-three-one-fifty-four-oh-five. Again, six-seven-eight-six-three-one-fifty-four-oh-five. Important endeavor, and thanks to Penny for executing this, and I'll yield.
Mr. Austin Wagner?
Yeah, I think I'll reiterate two things. One, just the, yeah, the reminder about the Rose Garden Grocery Assistance Event on this Thursday, and then as Councilmember Wheaton said, next Tuesday, we'll be having a public hearing about the potential for a nondiscrimination ordinance here in Smyrna. Lastly, to jump on what the mayor said, while we can't mandate anything here regarding masks, I would just encourage everyone, as we see the cases continue to arise, the number one thing that we can do, wear masks when you're around. It's, it's simple, we're all wearing them tonight, so I don't have any doubt about the people in this room, but I hope that we can encourage everyone we know to continue to wear masks and be safe and do what we can to, to combat the virus. With that, I yield.
Mr. Glenn Pickens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everybody a belated happy fourth, and I hope everyone was able to celebrate with their friends and family safely this weekend. For Ward one, I just wanted to give an announcement that zoning cases have resumed, and that there'll be an important re, zoning case this following Monday during the planning and zoning meeting for the Spring Road, Campbell Road proposal, so that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones?
This is Scott Cochran. I'd, I'll invite folks up for citizen input. I will follow up on what Councilman Wheaton was talking about with traffic. You know, we've had more fatalities and accidents in the city in the first few months of this year than I, I'd venture to say we've ever had. We've had an officer killed, we had another officer, a truck ran a light and, and flipped his truck, and it landed on his car. I can't, can't believe he survived, let alone walked away from it. So just know that Chief Bennett has made not only the DUI task force, but also traffic enforcement a top priority. It's not something that's been a priority in the city for quite some time. So just as you're out there, be careful and know that, that we are going to be, we are going to be enforcing more than we ever have, and rightly so, so. The next is show cause hearings, we have none. Item eleven is citizen input, and I know some people came in late, and I know in this environment, it's a little odd to have to come up and sign in. If there is anybody who wishes to provide citizen input, I'd invite you to come up now and just make sure that you announce your, your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I am Trina Griffiths. I am running for Cobb County State Court Judge. I live in East Cobb, Marietta. It's kind of awkward to talk to everybody. Can I kind of stop at the side?
You're on, you're on TV, so that you're, you're talking to the audience. Yeah, yeah, you're good, you're good.
I am Trina Griffiths, as I said. I'm a thirty-one-year resident of Cobb County. I've lived here over half of my life. My daughter has just graduated from KSU, and I've been a lawyer, practicing lawyer for the last thirty-one years. So I am running for Cobb County State Court Judge. There is a runoff on August eleventh. A lot of people don't know that, but August eleventh is the next election date before November. I am running because I have a lot of experience. I've been practicing law in Cobb County State Court for the last twenty-four years. I was a prosecutor from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and six, and I've since been doing defense work. So I believe my experience, as well as my perspective, having been on both sides, makes me a good candidate for that position. So I've got ties to the community. Cobb County is home. I ask for you all to look at my, I have information for people who are here to get to know me. I'm an open book, and I ask for your consideration and your vote. Trina Griffiths for Cobb County State Court. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I need to wipe this off?
No, you've, our sanitizer, Mr. Landon's coming up here to do it. That's his new, it's going to be his new title, I think.
And I apologize for how I'm dressed, but I'm on the campaign trail, so, thank you.
Hey, listen, we all get it, don't worry about it, yeah. Excellent job again, Landon, thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Shutton. I'm running for Superior Court. The difference between state court and Superior Court is the kind of cases that they hear. In state court, they hear misdemeanors, traffic cases, and some civil cases. In Superior Court, they handle criminal felonies, family law cases, and complex civil cases, anything involving real estate or injunctions, any kind of equitable relief. The George Constitution best that in the Superior Court. Superior Court Judge is the most powerful person in the state, according to Chief Justice Harris Hines, who passed away about a year, year and a half ago. Chief Justice Hines was an important part of my upbringing as a young lawyer. He was a mentor to me, and he showed me, and along with Conley Ingram and George Krieger, as to what a judge should be and how a judge should serve, serve the community. I've been a business lawyer now for twenty years. I represent small businesses. I have my own firm in Marietta. I'm a small business owner myself, but I live right here in Smyrna. In fact, I live three blocks down Stevens Street. My wife and my kids, my two kids, they, they are here, they play Smyrna soccer, Smyrna Little League. My wife is a schoolteacher at Smyrna Elementary. We are proud members of Smyrna First United Methodist Church, along with a couple of folks up here on stage. I am running because I want to have a little bit of a diverse experience on the Cobb County bench. Here in Cobb County, we're very fortunate in the sense that the judges work together, and they rely on each other for their diverse expertise. We are a little behind when it comes to business lawyers... We are a little behind when it comes to business lawyers and civil lawyers running for the bench. The reason why is that most civil lawyers don't want to give up lucrative practice to go serve on the bench. I want to serve on the bench. I want to serve my community. I grew up, my daddy was a Methodist preacher for forty years. My mother worked in the WIC department, at the Health Department, giving prenatal care to women in need. I grew up with the mindset of serving the public, and I'm willing to give up my lucrative practice to go serve on the bench because there's a greater good. There's a greater need that's out there, and it's important for me to be an example to my children, who are now ten and six. You've probably seen my signs around. I have put up ninety-five percent of those myself, and about eighty percent of those were with the help of my ten-year-old. He's been a wonderful campaign helper, and my website is, if you want to know more about me, is gregforjudge, that's greg f o r judge dot com. My cell phone number is on my website. You are more than welcome to reach out to me via phone. You're also welcome to go onto the contact page and contact me via email. I'll answer any questions that you have for me, and I would love to have your vote and your support on August the eleventh. Greg Shutton for Superior Court Judge. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.
Anybody else have any citizen input for us this evening? All right. There's no other business? Oh, you do. Okay. Kind of a delayed response.
Thank you, Mr. Sanitizer.
That's sticking, Landon, I'm telling you.
So I'll just be brief, because you did address this earlier. I appreciate you two addressing the mask, mandatory mask requirement. I just wanted to bring up, the City of Savannah, Georgia currently has a mask requirement in place, has been in place for about five days. Brian Kemp hasn't made any attempts to block it legally. The Athens Clark County Commission is going to vote on a similar mandate tomorrow. So I definitely understand the sentiment, but I would just encourage you all, as we continue to move through this, to put the public's health first, and also look at what the cities around us are doing as a COVID-nineteen response. Thank you.
And I've actually spoken with the mayor, and he wasn't sure that what he was doing was, you know, within his purview either. He was just going to try it. So we'll see how that ends up. Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir. Come on up after the sanitizer. Yeah, next meeting, yeah, next meeting you'll have a cape, Landon.
Yeah. My name is Gon. I'm a owner at South Cobb Drive, that's three one eight one, South Cobb Drive. And I'm here to against for the new liquor store opened up at twenty-nine hundred South Cobb Drive. If you look around, too many stores around. So basically, if you put another store in Smyrna right now, it's create more competition for the small business owner. So please reconsider your decision before you make it. Because the last four years I've been owning the store, we've been struggling on the sale. So if you put another store in, it would be create more competition. And also, if you look around, every corner, there's a packer store right now. So it's make it harder for the business owner, especially like the small business like us. So just thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor, and the council member.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have a public comment? Yes? Okay. All right. If there's no other business brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at seven fifty. Thank you, everybody.